Everything works and then I found out that it just passed every fire so. I'd like to have a moment of silence for Mr. Yourj. Thank you. Uh, this evening, you know, we have to fill in Dana's not with us, so Tabitha will be filling in, so we'll be kind and speak slowly and refresh the table. So please let us call the board.
Mr. Good.
Here.
Mr. Ferrer.
Here. Please stand for pledge.
My pledge, ladies and gentlemen, by the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Just a reminder, this meeting is being recorded for informational purposes as we share each other. Tabitha, would you like to give the minutes?
Uh, motion to accept the minutes, the meeting is held in September.
I'll make a motion to pay to accept the minutes for the meeting to be held in September.
A second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Good. Yes.
Mr. Ferrer.
Yes.
Mr. Settle.
Yes.
Motion to table the bills for the month of September. I'll make a motion to table the bills for the month of September.
Well, second, uh, with and the fiscal option did indicate with the indication, I'd like to add to that that, uh, we receive them by the 15th of September.
Okay, I'll, I'll adjust that and make a motion to pay the bill for two, uh, table the bills in September, uh, with getting the financials by.
Any additional discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Ferrer.
Yes.
Mr. Siles.
Yes.
Mr. Good. Motion to table the financial statements in September. Yeah.
Hundred fifty. Uh, I'll make the motion that we, uh, table the financial statements to receive them.
I'll second.
Any additional discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Settle.
Yes.
Mr. Good. Yes, Mr. Ferrer.
Yes. We have no communication. Not on the board. Uh, at this time, we have the, uh, open agenda comments, again, only on the agenda items. We will have comments at the end of the meeting for any additional questions you might have. The first sort of question to this floor, agenda items on, are there any questions? Pass on. We have a substitute, Sergeant Dean, see? No pressure, going in for our chief, who's for me.
Uh, for the month of September, officers funded four hundred and seventy-four calls, the fifty-seven incident reports, uh, two crash reports, um, or a, I'm sorry, fifty-five incident reports, two crash reports for a total of fifty-seven reports. Um, there were twenty-eight arrests made in the month of September, three of them drug-related, uh, three theft B and E's or burglaries, three assaults, B and E's or protection or violations, three resisting arrest, bleeding or obstructing, and six warrant arrests. There was twenty-eight traffic citations issued, six of them for driving or suspension, suspension or no operator license. Twelve were for miscellaneous equipment offenses, seven for miscellaneous moving offenses, two O B Is, eight for speed, and one seatbelt ticket. There was one report of burglary, burglary or B and E, eight assaults or domestic disputes, one criminal trespass, three vandalism or criminal damaging, five thefts, one identity theft, one robbery, two sex crimes, uh, one threats, kidnapping, or telephone harassment, eleven disturbances or fights, four suspicious activity, two suspicious persons, seven suspicious vehicles, eighty-one service calls, fifteen traffic or parking complaints, eighteen disabled vehicles, twelve animal complaints, twenty-two alarm drops. Uh, officers patrolled eleven thousand five hundred and twenty-one miles using eight hundred and thirty-eight point seven gallons of fuel. There were a hundred and forty-three and a half hours of overtime total, uh, twenty-two and a half of those were reimbursed overtime and a hundred and twenty-one hours of regular overtime. And that's all I've got here.
Thank you, Sergeant Dean. Any questions for Sergeant Green's filling in? Would you like to add anything, Senator?
I've got nothing.
Okay. I'm sorry, we can't get you up to. Thank you. Where are you?
Thank you, Mr. Ferrer. For the month of September, we responded to a hundred and eighty-nine emergency calls for service. Of those, a hundred and fifty-seven were EMS, six structure fires, five motor vehicle crashes, three vehicle fires, four miscellaneous fires, three service calls, four reports of wires were trees down, seven fire alarm investigations. Been mutually into the township eighteen times and went out of the township thirty times, totaling a hundred and eighty-nine. We had two hundred and fifty-seven hours of overtime. We used a total of five hundred and thirty-three gallons of fuel. Uh, we have our junior fire academy set for October nineteenth and twentieth, and so today at four-thirty, that was filled. We have safety night coming up at the schools on October the thirtieth from six to eight P M. And we are beginning in-school fire prevention education tomorrow morning at nine-thirty. We received a donation from a local business of smoke alarms and carbon monoxide alarms. Station fifty-one has closed forty-four out of the possible sixty shifts. Um, I'm in the process of, uh, interviewing for the full-time, uh, position. And that's all I have for my report this evening.
Any questions from the trustees? Chief, I have one, yes, you indicated, uh, you had a donation, but that company wished to remain anonymous.
Um, I know last time he didn't, but this time he just didn't indicate either way, so.
Okay, I certainly don't want to bring him up if he doesn't want to be. I appreciate that, that's anytime we get a donation for something, especially smoke alarms, carbon monoxide detectors, that would really make a difference.
Yeah, this is the second donation from that company and he has really helped quite a few residents, uh, with this program, so we appreciate it.
Chief, if someone's interested, should just call, call me or I'll be.
Yes, um, you can call the fire department and, uh, we have a list as we go down. And, uh, if you are eligible for it, we will come and place that smoke detector in your office.
Thank you, appreciate it. Would you like to start with your motion?
Yes, I'd like to ask the board for a motion to hire Robert Addis-Cleetti as a volunteer trainee as per the current volunteer contract and no additional benefits.
Make a motion to hire Robert Addis-Cleetti as a volunteer trainee as per the volunteer contract with no additional benefits.
Chief, pronounce the number? I say. Any additional discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Good. Yes. Mr. Ferrer.
Yes.
Mr. Settle.
Yes.
Thank you. Did you ask the same question in the hiring meeting?
No, we just called the chief in the first.
All right, thank you. Next, I'd like a motion to hire John Daniels as a part-time firefighter to E M T Basic at an hourly rate of fifteen dollars and no additional benefits.
I made a motion that we hire Mr. John Daniels as a part-time position within the fire department with no, uh, benefits.
One second.
Any discussion on that motion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Ferrer.
Yes.
Mr. Settle.
Yes.
Mr. Good. Uh, yes.
Chief, I want to, uh, mention, I don't know if they're just coming through the door, if you're out there looking for them. Uh, especially this day and age, if we can find somebody that wants to volunteer, that's a great thing. Part-time also, but, uh, to pick up a couple on our, our roles is, is a good thing, and I appreciate the effort.
Yes, sir, thank you. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to ask that the swearing-in of the career firefighters be moved to the end of tonight's agenda so that after we adjourn, we can enjoy refreshments with them.
Sure.
Not a problem. Thank you. That's all I have this evening.
Questions for Chief Allen? Road super.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Road report for the month of September. We had nine hundred and seventy-five regular hours worked, thirty-seven hours overtime, uh, in the road program. That's the two thousand twenty-four paving. We had eleven hours overtime in the cemetery for a total of one thousand twenty-three hours. And up that, we had twenty-five administration, four hundred and forty-six in road projects. And again, that's, uh, most of that is on Albright McK. As you know, we're, we're in the process of paving that road. We had several culverts we replaced out there as part of the program, so, uh, I'll have more on that later in the report. We had forty hours routine road maintenance, primary patching hot holes, forty hours equipment maintenance and repairs. We had to do some work for the Bobcat Skid Steer, the Grader, and then Tool Cat. Uh, two hundred and forty hours at cemetery, we had three cremation burials. Uh, six hours signs, Hubbard Thomas Road, streets on every place, and we had stops on up on Lincoln Street. Shop time, thirty hours, miscellaneous fifty hours, that's mowing, administration building, the green and the highway. Thirty hours safety and training. Uh, we attended a, the whole crew attended a stormwater training over the, uh, Ohio State Extension in Corvina, Ohio. Um, for stormwater, basically going over the do's and don'ts with stormwater. A hundred and sixty hours of the park. Road department used sixty-nine point five gallons of gasoline, five hundred and nineteen point eight gallons of diesel fuel. Cemetery used a hundred and thirty-three point five gallons of gas, twenty-seven point ten gallons of diesel, and the park used twenty-seven point four gallons of gas. And that's all for the report.
Any questions? Yeah, on these signs, uh, those six signs, did they include, I'm sure they did, Second Street and Elm?
No, those, oh, that, that, I didn't include that in the report.
I appreciate you not getting those up, people on Second Street.
Yeah.
Called and told me that they're happy and done.
What, uh, it just brought wrong that, so feedback or?
Yeah, at first they thought maybe another sign should be a closer to Broadway, but once, in fact, the police department also, they went in and put some orange tickets. I don't think they had to write any citations on it and, uh, done.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
Uh, okay, so item number one on the, let me get more agenda. Current status of the two thousand twenty-four paving program. So we're, as I said, we're currently on Albright McK. Uh, Martuccio paving was working, then we finished up about five-thirty tonight. So the binder, the binder is down and it's, it's, uh, chucked, what we call chucked. So it has number eight on it. Uh, so now they'll wait till this material cures out, it's going to cure out for two weeks, they'll come back and then they'll put the burn material down. The seal code won't happen until next year, so they'll come back next year and then seal again.
Is it road? Cause you had to period after the choke. Is it vulnerable to damage and having weights on it or?
No, no, actually, this, this particular material, it, it's better if you get a lot of traction. Cause it kind of needs it together and binds it, rolls it in, and it's, it's good for it, so.
So you suggest everyone to go out?
Uh, yeah, sure, we'll put out a track. But, so, so, um, if you're going down Albright, Albright McK, there is some drop-offs on some of the edges, so just be careful. We did widen out, so it's a little wider than it was, uh, before in that thirteen-hundred foot from where we left off down to Andy Boyle. So it's, it's, it's a, it's a better, it's a lot better road than it was. And any good out here has been down. Albright McK, you know what that road is like, it was pretty rough. So, um, as far as the paving, that's where we're at. Sanitary sewers, uh, up on West Hill, or you'll see there's some sanitary sewer lids, they, they corded a few up there, but they haven't dug them out yet. I wasn't up there today, so I don't know what they did today. They did four of the ones around the square here, so those are done.
That was on week.
So they must have done it. So that, that still has to be finished. I think that's about, we've got a few little items here and there that we've got to take care of, but.
So it should be wrapped up inside too.
Yeah, so a couple of weeks we'll do the burning, then Albright McK will be.
So there's only road that didn't get done this year is, is, uh, a little bit of Crestwood.
And Wildwood.
And Wildwood, and that will probably happen in next year's after that project is done in stormwater.
Yes. The, I also have the paperwork, and Dana's not here, so I guess I could have two signs in, but. For the, as you know, the loan program, um, they just turned in the invoice for the loan. So the chairman, or well, who are the chairman, Dan has to sign the paperwork for that, and Dana has to sign it, so. Thought I'd catch you both there at the meeting, but I didn't.
So that's the total, it was, that's the five, one, four, six, five, one, eight, and four.
That is the number so far.
Of the loan?
Of the loan.
Correct. What do you mean so far?
Well, don't forget, there's still one sanitary sewer lid, so that invoice hasn't been invoiced yet.
So that's not the total, cause we're around one-six, right?
Well, I, I think the, the estimate is one-eight, so we're going to be, we're going to be well over. So there, but there will be another invoice coming as soon as they finish the cemetery. I'm, I'm going to enter check in here just a little bit, so if, they are still working on the Yankee Lake. The only reason I bring that up is because part of that work is going to be on Andy Boyle for the sanitary sewer that's going through. So they're currently working on Mount Seven here, here in Boyle, and they're across. Those, 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 um, laterals are supposed to be forward, so there shouldn't be any cuts there. But there will be work on Andy Boyle on this end around seven, so.
Which side is the sewer going on?
Sewer will be on the south side of Andy Boyle. So the sewer line is in Profield, but it's going to be servicing Yankee Lake residence.
Well, isn't that other part of the project this too, right? The main part of the sewer project?
It's all Yankee. Yeah, but the only reason I bring that up is because it may be some construction on that end of Andy Boyle. So if you go, if you go down that way, look out for, uh, there's some excavators there for some shell construction. Uh, item number three. As we talked in the, uh, the department meetings, we, so we have some skin patching to do on King's Ridge, we wanted to do before noon. Just to hold this over for next year, hopefully we'll get the grant for King's Ridge. But we'd like to do some skin patching out there, and then, uh, it's going to cost about four or five thousand dollars.
That's our share or total cost?
That's total cost, some of that's going to come out at the Hartford, but there's not much on their side, so most of it's on our side. So I expect that.
And that's been budgeted, correct?
Yeah, it's a, it's a.
That, we own money?
Sure.
Now, I didn't, I didn't see on the agenda, were you guys, were you doing the resolutions for the art budget tonight or that? That's not happening.
Yeah, we did, those were done at the second quarter meeting, second quarter of the Arkham meeting.
Okay, did you include?
Yeah, sent it.
We did not exceed fourteen.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we.
You said we gave her that.
Give her the total, so we have the right amount.
Yeah, and I'll give her the invoices that I have, so she can just pay. Okay, so that item's good.
Yes.
Uh, cemetery items.
One, one second before you, uh, the paving, are you going to be, uh, patching, I know Sharon Oak was a mess, you're going to do a lot of that. I know you're limited, but can you do anything in the worst parts of that, just make it bump slow or less bumpy?
Are you making?
No, I'm just asking. You're allowed to say no, not what I'm saying.
Yeah, I know, Sharon Oak is bad. I just don't know if we have the money and the time. Cause the weather's starting to draw lots now.
I know, but you squeeze it in.
Well, yeah, we're, yeah, we're good. So. Like, at the end of the week, it's supposed to be warm, so that's kind of a issue.
Okay, that's fine. The patch and cop.
Yeah, I know there's a lot of issues, a couple spots on that.
Thank you. Yeah, you do the center.
Uh, cemetery, and this is just a reminder to the residents that, that we're going to do the cleanup, it's a fall cleanup. We do it every year, uh, typically it's around the fifteenth of October, so it's around the fourteenth to the eighteenth this year. So if you have any of your items at the cemetery and you want to, you want to retain those items, then I will remove them before that time. And Tabitha's going to put it on the, the digital sign on the, and on your website.
Okay.
I made the graphic today, so she has it.
Okay. And then the park, park item is, we're going to close the bathroom. I, was there not supposed to be any tournament or something in October or?
Supposed to be running fourteenth or fifteenth, but I haven't got back with Mr. Schultz's seat. Do you have any calls in there?
I'm having calls. Well, it's not working right, so I don't know.
I was going to check with him today, but I'll check with him, I'm pretty sure it looks like they're not at this point. Was, was the men's room lock ever fixed?
Yes.
Because I noticed during the week, the door was wide open, and then the weekend it was closed. I didn't go up to see it to lock it, cause we had problems with that lock, if he just closes it on the weekend, it was locked.
It should, it should be, it should, it's on a timer, so it should be open, you know, from, I think, tires, six to nine.
Okay, but what I'm saying, during the week, if you drive by, the door is wide open. So I thought maybe it opened.
He may leave it open just to get an air out.
Okay.
And that's possible.
Are we going to leave the dumpster there this year? You talked about that before.
Yeah, I, I can, because it costs us money to move it, so.
Move it and then move it back.
Yes.
And the A D, the A D put inside.
A D has to be taken off, I'll wait till when we close the bathrooms, we'll pull the A D. I did talk to the gay guy today too. He was down there Friday, but the module or whatever didn't fix the problem, so he's supposed to come back Wednesday. He thinks it might be the, what he calls the motherboard, the controller that made control. We, and we did replace that before, if you remember, the real lightning strike, it killed that thing, the controller, so.
So you, then you have to reprogram, right?
He'll do it, he'll have to do all that.
For the fall months would be best.
Yeah, yeah, we will switch to times. I just wanted to, because we are going to close the bathrooms at the end of the month, so the, is the tournament supposed to last a week?
No, it's a weekend.
It's just a weekend.
It's supposed to be the fourteenth and fifteenth, but I don't know if they post in seconds. It was a two-day.
Fourteenth is a whole mistake.
Yeah, fourteenth is Monday.
Uh, Monday, I was prior.
Yeah, okay, so I don't want to close the bathrooms, we tell her.
Yeah, we said by then.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, thank you, man, and that's all I have for the report.
Any, just a question for Dana? And our coat officer is with us.
Thank you, uh, this is Sharon. Uh, go, just a few items that we have here. Some new, newer permits since we met last, sixty-one eighty-eight Merwin Chase, we've got residential addition. Uh, eleven seventeen Sharon Oak Road, um, AT and T cell tower, co-located, eight forty-six Linita roof replacement. These are all Trump kind of building permits, though. Seven seventy-five Rourke Field Avenue Fire Restoration, six oh nine Hall of Price Road, we've got a new single family dwelling, which I believe they started on that today. Uh, six fourteen Bedford Road, Brookfield High School Press Box, seventy-two eighty-one Warren Sharon Road. Uh, that is a, a large building next to Sparkville Expo Center. Seventy-two eighty-one Warren Sharon Road roof replacement, it looks like they've, they've wrapped up with that. Moving on to complaints, we've got seventy-three twenty-five Warren Sharon Road, uh, debris, lots of debris that's been on in Z score. Uh, that, as of today, hasn't been cleaned up by the, by the property owner, the outer floor, and there's a pretty good chunk of it. Uh, seventy-eight twenty-nine Helm Street, we got a mattress, crack rate out by the river, I did send a letter and, uh, duplex, that's on us, it's great. Um, sixty-seven thirty-three Warren Sharon, um, property has sponsored share sale, it turns the process of cleaning, cleaning out the exterior and the interior. Uh, they did indicate it looked some of the trees are forest, so I'll stay on with that. Seven sixteen South State Line, health department's helping with some, uh, debris in the rear yard and then the alley. Uh, we've got corner Ohio and Lucy, general condition of the property, six sixty-two Bedford Road, uh, general condition dwelling, so all been given, really, probably this week. Um, seventy-nine nineteen First Street Vehicle, vehicles and the mains, it's been on the, eighty-nine ninety-nine, uh, trash debris, that's been on the problem. We've got one on Meeks Street, eighty-two forty-three, that health department working to, to help us out on that one. Extreme amount of open dumping, state of the place, they're solid waste. Down on Broadway area, uh, the users are blue for, like, they're inoperable, inoperable vehicles in the, uh, parking lot, so I did send a letter to that. Particular owners of the court, and they did take care of that for us and remove those vehicles. Corner of First Street and Broadway, we've got debris and a new operable vehicle, which, uh, we'll deal with, we'll, uh, uh, ten ninety-two Yankee Run Road. The property's coming along, actually, I did send a notice of violation to that, uh, month ago, and they were, as of today, it looks like they've cleaned up. Uh, we've got eighty-two thirty-seven Lincoln Street, it's, uh, health department's helping us out there with, uh, some, uh, solid waste and also got some open dumping issues, uh, I think, with, uh, health department on eight thousand block of Superior Street. Eight seventy North State Line Road and eighty-two oh seven Business Street. Open dumping issues there. Uh, we had just one address assigned, twelve eighty-four Sharon Oak Road, uh, person, uh, Ellen Lloyd, is going to build a house for the next year, so she's in the address of the year twelve eighty-four. Sharon Oak Road, so hopefully building up for home game next year, so like almost twenty-eight percent. And lastly, uh, demolition through the Ohio Department of Development, the land that it's coordinating, that has been funded according to the land bank administrator. Just waiting on destruction from them for the next, you know, the next step, what, what they do, you know, how many buildings on our, our ten and twelve, what next, what steps we have to take next. That's about, I'll add.
Thank you. Getting from. Yeah, I'd like to, first, you, you mentioned at the beginning that mattress is gone on Elm Street, they, like. I'd like to mention that, I know on behalf of me, that I've sent probably three letters of violations in the last month, and they work. Uh, so I, it must be the way to word it. Uh, in the past, sometimes they would ignore those, and I really appreciate the effort to get that done. Uh, property on Warren Sharon Road, not far from here, uh, that property's improved, uh, dramatically.
Yeah, so, well, a well-written letter, people will, will eat what I'm asking them to do, but it didn't work, so.
And, uh, it's evident here by your reports every month, Pete did, you're not sitting in your office, um, staring at the walls. Really appreciate the effort you put in. Do you think by any chance you could get ahold of the land bank, they could give them a courtesy call and say, hey? Any idea where we stand? Cause we had, how many buildings on that demolition?
Probably that dozen, well, and then two of them, I think, were going to be knocked off because they're, uh, they're just, they're occupied right now. And I think the people have obviously picked them up, so they're kind of coming down.
If we can get those taken down, even if we have.
Yeah, if we have half of the ten of, of these real houses. So I, we'll touch base with, uh, with the land bank, it's actually U-House, U-Houses, so.
Thank you.
We're always, always bothering me in the township for, you know, that, that, that's for doing what you're doing.
I don't know what proper procedure is. I'm not going to be here for a minute, my name is Sassy Luna, I live down here on Sharon Warren Road. I just wanted to request maybe some streetlights on Bedford, people don't always adhere to that speed level, speed limit, you know?
Streetlights?
Yes, kind of streetlights from the school down Bedford to Sharon Warren Road, that'd be very helpful. People don't adhere to the ste, speed limit, and it's very dark on Bedford Road, and it's getting darker, and a lot of kids walk down our road. That's all I have.
To get streetlights put up?
Yes, one, just even a couple.
The neighbors have to request it, it has to be a majority of the people, that one, there's a process, we just can't put them up yet, so.
So by the petition, have them sign it?
Yeah, it's almost fifty-one percent, and then we can approach I O X with that information.
There's only like ten neighbors, so I mean, five neighbors.
Yeah.
Six.
Whatever you, whatever's in that stretch, you're talking about from Warren Sharon to New eighty-two?
New eighty-two, old eighty-two.
So whatever, the number of houses there?
Yes.
That, that, that's the first step, and then we can go to I O X with that. So is there one on the corner of Grove and?
I'm sorry, it's, it's Bedford Road.
But is there one turned on the corner of Bedford and Grove Street by the Dr. LaBry?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Nice, thank you. Is there a man?
I will do the man report.
Yeah, we have a volunteer to read.
The code report.
Thank you.
This is the senior man report. Money collected is twenty-six dollars. A volunteer driver, Albert, donated, and he has eight, pinchot one, Puhat two, for a total of eleven hours.
I don't think we can say enough how appreciative we are of our volunteers, and they are volunteers that drive that van. And, uh, since we picked up Mr. Puhat, we don't think that three of them are well, really, Mrs. Yassian, do you have the best of the other?
I just had someone turn in an application to go to your pride.
Was it the one from before?
Yes. So this will probably be asked for a good old issue.
I really, I know we all appreciate the fact, and so do our seniors, if that's getting taken care of. Thank you. Next item is mine under old business. We normally finish our meetings around eight, so we've got a lot of time to talk about the next item. And then Ashley's standing through that and swearing in the cookies, so. If you remember back in January, we had Chad Silvers talk about the disc golf course at the park, and he had a nice presentation. Since we have some money left in our park fund, I quote our trustees about possibly investing that in this program. Inviting three experts. You know there are such things as experts of disc golf, I find out there are. Uh, we have one, and I didn't realize there was a disc golf course Hall of Fame. And Bill Land, did you raise your hand, he is a Hall of Famer recipient. Uh, we have Chad, uh, Chad, Chad Silver, I introduced him already, who's here from back in.
Yeah, yes.
Just making sure I remember your name. And Cory White, Cory's the resident Brookfield. And they're all three well-versed in the sport game challenge of disc golf. So I'm gonna open a few comments, and we rely on those to reach the goal of the likes of. So by the time you leave, you're gonna know more than you ever did about disc golf. Uh, when we had the presentation, we were looking at an eighteen hole course, and we've since pared that down to nine, we can tell you why we did that. Um, a couple of things about it, I didn't realize that the sport is growing in popularity from a young age, six and seven, up to people in their eighties. And having walked the park myself, I think it's an ideal situation for. So what I'm gonna do is call on Chad first, ensure the, and Cory's, ensure the Brookfield representatives to kind of give us eye spots. And then each of these streets have expertise. And I hope in November to give you a hard, fast proposal of what it will look like. So right now, I kind of touched back in January, gave you some information since then, but I bring the experts to us to talk about it. They can answer any questions we might directly about it, so. Cory, you went up and up and just say a few things about the sport, and then we'll start with the bill, and move on from there, sort of.
I got Cory White, I live over in Northview Drive over here, uh, we're in the corner of Lee and Northview. Uh, I started playing disc golf in twenty sixteen. Uh, I did a story, I worked for the Sharon Road, which Joe pinched on here. And, uh, we did a story, they were putting up a disc golf course over at, uh, Buell Park. And we did a story on it. I was a big ball golfer, and I was a little college, and I learned something that was cheaper. So, which found out disc golf is not really that cheap when you get really big into it. But, uh, it, it's basically just like ball golf, uh, we call it ball golf, but, uh, you play, you got discs that are like a driver, a mid-range, a putter. And you all fly different ways, different angles and stuff like that, and it's, uh, ever since I started in twenty sixteen, uh, it has grown so much over the last few years. And, uh, it's actually been a lot of fun. I travel a lot, I travel a lot of state to play. Uh, since twenty sixteen, I think I've played over two hundred and thirty tournaments, something like that. So I play a lot, Brad plays a lot, Phil used to play a lot, he still plays, but he got a heart attack not too long ago, so it's kind of slowed him down a little bit, so.
No, this question, I'm asking early on, I'm sure we'll cover as we move on. Did you touch on before, what's the disc golf is, you know, set up? What's the normal maintenance?
Uh, normal maintenance would be, I mean, trees grow every year, so you might have to trim up some trees. Uh, weeds, like on the end of the fairways and stuff, grass, like weed lacking maybe here and there, but, uh, I do all of the volunteering down at Maine right now for their disc golf course. I have a key to the park and everything. And really, all I do is clean up sticks that fall, like during storm damage and stuff like that. And maybe I'll spend an hour weed lacking a hole, just, just to keep it up at the park. Uh, with a nine hole course like this, it'll make it a lot easier, you don't really have to do a lot of maintenance than with it. And some of the holes are gonna be through the course, so you don't even have to really worry about like trees and stuff like that, so. Really, that's about it. It's easy, really easy cleanup, and more people that use it, the more it's gonna wear in, and people actually clean up, pick up sticks like that, too. It's like the course keeps on giving.
I'd like to share with our trustees, there's an article that Bill wrote, and I'll give them a copy, and talks about, uh, disc golf. And I know these gentlemen spent some time actually walking through, so, Bill, with your expertise and Chad and Cory, please, Bill, you actually walk the park? And my concern was, we don't want a park in the golf portion to interfere with the rest of the park. That was one of the things I asked these three gentlemen. When you design, it's keep that in mind, because there's activities, there's baseball, there's practices, there's football, so. Bill, kind of, some of your expertise, I think you spent three or four hours walking in the woods and kind of get a feel of what it would look like. So you can share some thoughts with us on, you know, I know it's early on, it can change once it's underway, but. Share your initial thoughts on how that's, how it'll lay out.
Okay, sure. Thanks for, um, having us here and entertaining, putting in the disc golf. Um, I did take a couple of trips out to the park to look, and the property's very good for, I would say, nine, twelve holes. But as you stated, unless you interfere with the other activities, that's probably as big, as many holes as I would say you could put out there. And I, the key is, is you want it to be safe, you want it to have quality holes for the audience you have. And, and, you know, get that local usage, and, and I think that will happen. I think if you pursue the disc golf, you're gonna, you're gonna be pleased with it. It's, it's pretty low cost activity, relatively speaking, and low maintenance. The initial activity to put it in is much more significant than, than normal maintenance.
Brad, your background, you presented a board, just to remind them, you designed courses, finished one recently in Howland?
That's correct, yeah, my most recent one that, uh, that was installed was Howland, and actually, uh, currently working on Stevens Park right now, and, uh, in Niles. Um, it's about halfway as done. Um, yeah, like, just to kind of add on with, uh, you know, with what they said, and, you know, you're, you're one of, when I initially had presented it, about an eighteen hole course. And we kind of backed it off to a nine and made it so that it's, you know, gonna work with the rest of the park. And I kind of, you know, even, and Bill had talked about it, you know, with like maybe up to twelve holes, and I mentioned about with Cory, uh, we kind of talked a little bit. Where there might be a few other areas in there where, where we would have like, could potentially have the initial holes, one through nine. With possibly, you know, most likely two sets of, of Ts, whether you wanna call that a short and a long, or a blue and a white, or, you know, however you wanna label it. Uh, but it would essentially be two different layouts for the nine holes. And then on top of that, there may actually be enough room to put in what we might consider like an AV and a C. And those might not be part of like where the rest of the course are, like where we're looking in the very back of the park. Those could potentially be in some of the other areas where some other activities go on sometimes. So that maybe when softball and baseball's not going on, which is most of the year, um, there are still, or during the day, whatever the case may be. There are still more holes that could be played, but part of, part of the time when other park activities are going on.
Not interfering.
It's not interfering, we don't have to play those holes, those are like extra. Um, when we were out there meeting, we were, I was talking about, uh, for like leagues and tournaments, an official PGA round, um, consists of a minimum of thirteen holes. So if we had nine holes, plus an AV and a C, that's twelve. Say we were to put in a practice basket that's somewhere at the beginning of the course, just to people can play practice on. We could potentially make that a temporary hole for tournaments. We have our thirteen hole layout, it could be an official round for a tournament and a league. And, uh, you know, we would, you know, plan something around that, so.
My understanding is that the hole would need to be a par three, four, or five, similar to ball golf?
Correct.
Okay. So it wouldn't be like a short holes course, all par threes?
Not necessarily, no, I mean, there's potential there, especially with, um, what I originally presented, I, I think you could probably fit eighteen holes back there. But they might not be eighteen, they might not be eighteen good holes. It might just be eighteen holes that are gonna fill space to make it, you know, eighteen holes. Where with only doing nine in the back portion, we can really probably put a lot of thought into it and come up with nine really good disc golf holes. Um, with two different sets of layouts that aren't gonna interfere with, you know, anything for the rest of the market either, so, yeah.
So in, in.
So they could be up to par.
Our holes are ranging in yards. What, what are the range and feet for like a par three, four, or five?
They can vary, uh, at a beginner level, you know, they could be a hundred and fifty feet, they have a thousand feet for, for professional. Um, probably in that instance of this, um, if doing multiple layouts, the beginners would probably average about two hundred and fifty feet. And then advanced will be closer to like three hundred something, if you hit a longer.
And the tree, the tree portion in that part of the park was not disadvantaged, it's actually, it's a good thing to have two obstacles to run around.
Yeah, and, and if you, uh, if you have, there's a lot of good choices for courses, so there's some demand in it. So we create some, some local activities, and you create some repeatability. There's some courses you go to, you play them once, and you don't necessarily feel like you need to go back. If you make it interesting enough, I know I put one in a West Branch, that people play it three, four times because of the repeatability of the nine holes. That's what you really wanna achieve with a smaller, with a lesser hole count. Because the course is interesting enough that you get some repeatability. Cause you come out to the park, you wanna stay for a little bit.
So for simplicity's sake, every hole has a four by ten or five by twelve cement pad? That would be one of the costs per hole? And then the basket for each hole? And then what would the other, the T marker would be another expense?
Yeah, T size, um, clearing out, you know, undergrowth, um, and that fall, you know?
So when you.
That's a one-time, like, you know, upfronted.
Right, so when you walk the potential layout, there were a few saplings you thought come in the place, and injuries laying throughout, but there were really no major fifty, sixty, eighty-year-old trees that you could see about to come out, which is a plus.
No, and, and remember, too, this isn't a golf course as in manicured lawn, you're not hitting it off the ground, you're standing in it, so it's really, you know, taking out briars, brush, so forth. So you're not, you're not planting grass, you're not mowing grass in the, in the woods. It's just accessibility there, and, you know, you need the airspace available to throw through. But it's, it's not like a golf course in that maintenance.
So when you get into spot, early on for the eighteen hole, I never had like, I left in the office to project, it was thirty to thirty-five thousand for eighteen hole, that was just a rough estimate.
Correct.
So in our minds, I, a lot of two thousand per hole, you feel comfortable going, the layout, that might, again, wouldn't work on hard dump. Yeah, no, just for plant work, just so it doesn't scare.
I think the one trick is, uh, what do you have in labor? The, uh, hardware's pretty easy to figure out once you figure out all the equipment you wanna do. The trick is the labor, because if you have volunteers, you have, uh, staff, then you reduce those costs down significantly. If you have to hire.
You're looking for mostly retired people, right? He needs help. Did I live over there, I'm sorry. We, we are blessed to have some parker funds to invest, so that's why it's important to, to answer any general questions that, you know, your trustee.
Two thousand dollars per hole, give or take, is probably pretty spot on in the whole big scheme of things, right in that ballpark. And like, you know, you know, we'll finalize, you know, we'll, once it's decided, we'll, you know, finalize like the layout and make sure that we're all confident with, with this and that or whatever. And have a, a broader idea of, you know, do we wanna do just nine, do we wanna do twelve, do we wanna do thirteen, things of that sort. So I mean, we can, but for the most part, your nine, um, you know, or your two thousand-ish per hole is probably a good, you know, good golf.
Surprise, yeah. And you mentioned before, the goal about the restroom being a key part, having access to that, and once, and you starting there, or ending there as well?
Well, you know, that's what I mentioned, is option, either, you either contain it totally, to that backfield area, or you somehow incorporate the restroom area. But it's kind of a choice of what the township wants, or maybe through Cory, what makes the most sense. There's ups and downs. Do you include the restroom area? You increase some travel, some idle travel time, but you have the facilities. If you put everything over there, it's more self-contained, but you don't have, you're not near the facility, so it's, it's, it's an option.
And I think that should be something we consider, because not so much because of the restroom facility, but down the road, there's a concession stand there.
Right.
And if we can make this into something bigger than just someplace to go, then we can, we can generate some income, too.
Yes.
Yeah, we had, uh, put a course that they can't stay branch now, I don't think they're reaping the benefits. But the dean assisted, the course starts right as a student union, so they go in and get popped and whatever, whatever, before they start, and then they finish. But that happens, too.
And, and I know that, and hopefully you can, the only thing is, we're strapped a little bit on timeframe with our parker funds. But this, in my mind, and I spoke with Mark after the last presentation, this is one of the main things parkers supposed to do. The parker funds are, address the community.
Correct.
Uh, and this is, you know, like a direct shot. So I, I would be very interested in seeing some numbers, so that.
And you wouldn't be the only community that's using now their park at twenty-four, so.
It's been, I mean, and we've talked about before, making our park something more than a baseball facility. I love the fact that it's a baseball facility, but if we can add to it and then not, not disturb what we have.
Right.
Uh, I'm definitely interested.
And I, you know, when I, you know, I haven't walked it since around January the last time, um, but, you know, what's, one thing that I noticed when I was out there is, obviously, at once upon a time, scouts had put effort into making the little trail back through there. And I think that's perfect, and I think that disc golf is only going to help enhance that. Um, where we can design in and around and off of that, but at the same time, kind of help clear up all around it, where it's gonna invite more people to come up and, you know, do the little loop of the trail and everything like that, so, yeah.
Do you find in your travels, the different ones you go to, that vandalism is a problem in all of the courses?
No, it's actually better because the random travel actually takes areas that aren't used. And some activities you might not like, people shy away from, because if it's a place where they don't expect to see anybody, bad things happen. But with the random travel through the players, that, uh, that ensures that activity.
I had mentioned in January, I, I'm pretty certain that, you know, I don't know how frequently, but, um, up on the, you know, up on the hill on the left side, as you're walking right. Maybe not now, but at some point, somebody was living up there, so this, this golf would probably eliminate that.
I remember you talking about that, and trying to be investigated.
Yeah, so, and then, uh, you know, just something we had noticed at, at Hound Park, uh, when we were there installing the course, there were the same three cars that were there in the back parking lot of that park, that were there, you know, if we went there five days a week, they were at least there four. Um, it didn't take long for us to figure out that it was some sort of dope deal going down. And, uh, since disc golf has been put in, those vehicles and those people are on the back. So it does deter and kind of keep people out of, like Bill said, those, those areas of the park that typically, you know, bad things potentially could be going on, disc golf, one of those, helps to turn that a lot.
So if I'm not asking any questions, definitely, I'd like, my plan is to meet with them over the next weeks or days, so we have some hard fingers, like, remember, to share with you. Did you have a layout, did you bring up by chance, we threw the layout?
Uh, no, we were kind of talking about, yeah, I did something, but, but, you know, that was our tentative.
You wanna share that at this point?
Yes, good.
Just to begin, this is a possibility, you know?
And I have a layout, too, just, we, we haven't bought together on the, on the course on it, but it's just a couple ideas.
So would you rely on all three of those together, since they're all experts, more than I am?
You know, one thing I did wanna mention, too, kind of the separation of all, uh, this is an example. Yeah, Young Drun, which is, uh, the first course I put in, enchant. Young Drun, which is the first course to put in in champion, we had a Saturday morning league that ran for one thousand in nineteen consecutive weeks. So it does gain use all the time, that maybe, we haven't found anybody that's even close to that. But it gets used all year round, so with your park, the weather doesn't stop going out there. If you, if you open the gates.
The gates roll all the time, in the winter?
Yeah.
Bathroom, man.
I just have one question.
Sure, fire away, they're the experts.
So like the maintenance on it, so in ten, fifteen, twelve years from now, like three or three, four pads, or what's the lifespan of a course?
The basket sort of warranty with one particular, well, most companies are also saying now, the basket warranty is actually twenty-five years. He had mentioned about Young Drun, that was first put in in ninety-six. Part of a project that I did two years ago, we actually got new baskets for that course, so they were, you know, some of the baskets were the original baskets from ninety-six. When we pulled them out, we actually put them in a couple of different schools in Warren. And it's, you know, so now they're almost thirty years old and they're still,
Yeah, they're still.
They're still, they're still fine, you know.
So like the pads, do you have to seal them, or like what is?
The cement pad.
Yeah.
I don't think so, I've not seen that.
These are pretty good, I mean, we, if, for winter maintenance, whenever we have tournaments, we always tell people, if you're gonna go out and shovel and salt the pads, don't salt them, use, use a material that's okay on, on concrete. Like, yeah, it's a very custom. And as long as that's taken care of, there should be issues, some of the pads that, at Young's reported in ninety-six, though?
No, it was spiced in time after that. But any pads that I've seen damaged, honestly, is the maintenance people driving their maintenance vehicles over top of them.
Could you be honest, I don't think we go back there, so that.
Yeah, no, no, I'm saying, I'm not saying here, maybe we'd do that. But in other parts where they bring the equipment in, and the guy at the forest, you come and cut some trees down, and they, and it's not common, but that's.
It's name regential.
The yearly maintenance, like Forrest said, you know, usually a local disc golfer or local disc golfers will help maintain it. You know, there might be some areas that, since you have cleared out some of the underbrush and everything, there may be some areas that like, grass may start to grow, that it might be, you know, there might be a time during the year that some of the newly cleared areas, you might need to go in and do like a one-time, you know, a couple hours with an actual, possibly a brush hog or something, like walk-in brush hog, or something just to do it, basically areas that might not be able to escape with a regular, but it's not too.
All right, any else, any questions from John? What other hole do you, anyone to share? Do you have any comments?
Yeah, I agree, is that what you need?
Yeah. Look at them and then, we're just gonna point out, so, range of the game. And those cooking class was much longer.
And, and really, all this is, is looking at a layout, but the point is, is one of them starts, one of the, the, obviously starts, you know, the restroom, and the other one is also contained here. I can see that, but that was just to get the sense.
Yeah, that's, oh, yeah, that's, like I said, I'm relying on these trees, the experts, because, you know, I don't believe in green bedding, they have the history, they have the knowledge, they have the, volunteerism, especially we got, got Brookfield, hometown, taking advantage of their.
Mine's obviously a little bit different, we have, we have an offering. But it's just more or less of a plan to, you know, and mine, actually, I even have pretty much some pretty solid raw numbers in there, for you to maybe.
That's a beauty, having three guys that can all enter the line and. Thank you for coming, we stick around for some healthy refreshments. And I'll be reaching out to the streamers that we need, by November, I'll be able to provide my colleagues, you know, hard pass numbers. Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. All right, at this point, we have new business. New business? Okay, at this point, we need to, because Billy's gonna be rushed here. Can I get you guys down on the top of the trustee, either the nineteen, that we have?
So do we have, if the swear the kids are waiting, puts the time of, uh, one in there?
That's on a nineteen. All right, so maybe the twenty-six, if you guys, the twenty-six are.
Should be.
And I thought if we had it, the old Derek Queen of War chair by Laddies. Okay, good for you. So we're gonna do it on the twenty-six? Uh, you have no new business? At this point, we will entertain any comments you may have, in necessarily a temporary agenda. If you comment or ask, please speak quietly so we can hear you. Commission, first and last thing, and when you arrive from the top. First, you call it. Danny, Danny?
I guess the only thing I have is, before our next meeting, we're gonna have trick or treat, so, we've already announced those hours, the thirty-first between five and seven. Be nice to see as many trick or treaters out there. The other I meant to mention it during the road department's report, I know it's maybe overstated this, but I'm gonna do it again. I really appreciate, you guys have been, I think, since the paving group before the paving, when we were doing the burn, all summer, you've been on point. You guys have just, and, and, he called me the night at five-thirty, I think it was on Friday, he's going home. I really appreciate the work to make twenty-six, twenty-seven, now Rhodes, Peyton, Brookfield in one year. As a, will you ever do that again? I really appreciate.
Thank you. Tabitha would like to thank you again for filling in. Thank you, we appreciate it. And, I think that's it, we have a motion for adjournment. We should do that.
Go with adjournment.
I tried to drive straight on. I want to get done in an hour.
Would firefighter Emily Stone, Joe Milano, Tom Young, please come forward? With, with family members? All right, swearing in will be done on behalf of the trustees and the township by trustee Suddles.
Okay, can I add to what you did?
What's that?
Yeah, absolutely. We, you folks have been online for a lot. We apologize, this is one thing that I think we need to do with every employee that comes to Brookfield, is to recognize you and tell you that we appreciate you becoming part of our team. And the fact that the chief wanted to make sure we did, even though we had COVID, we had things going on, it's included, so I'm glad we're able to do this. So it's a great honor to have this opportunity to swear these firefighters for the Brookfield Township Fire Party. So we're gonna do a swearing in, we're gonna cut this up so you, you know, we're gonna stumble in words, let's try. So we have firefighter Emily, firefighter paramedic Emily Stone, Thomas Young, and Joseph Milano. I state your name, raise your right hand, please. I state your name.
I, Thomas Young.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
Of the United States of America.
Of the United States of America.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the State of Ohio.
Of the State of Ohio.
I will observe.
I will observe.
And uphold.
And uphold.
The rules and policies.
The rules and policies.
Adopted by Brookfield Township.
Adopted by Brookfield Township.
Division of Fire and Emergency Medical Services.
Division of Fire and Emergency Medical Services.
And I will bear true faith.
And I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the Saint.
And allegiance to the Saint.
I will faithfully.
I will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
As a firefighter appointed to this department.
As a firefighter appointed to this department.
According to laws.
According to the laws.
Of the State of Ohio.
Of the State of Ohio.
Township of Brookfield.
The Township of Brookfield.
And Charm County.
And Charm County.
To the very best.
To the very best.
Of my skills and abilities.
Of my skills and abilities.
I take this oath freely.
I take this oath freely.
And without reservation.
And without reservation.
So I'll be gone.
So I'll be gone.
Congratulations.
I'll ask everybody, please bow your heads for a moment, as we ask for God's blessing. When I am called to duty, God, wherever flames may rage, give me the strength to save a life, whatever be its age. Help me to embrace a little child before it's too late, or save an older person from the horror of that fate. Enable me to be alert and hear the weakest shout, and quickly and efficiently put the fire out. I want to fill my calling and to give the best in me to guard my neighbor and protect their property. And if according to your will, I will lose my life, bless with your protecting hands my loving family from this strife. Lord, I ask that you bless firefighters Stone, Young, and Milano and their families. May your hand protect each of them and guide them in their duties. I ask Father that you please protect them in serving our community and allow them to return home safely when their tour is complete. It's through your name we pray, amen. So the badges have been presented. And the badge of the firefighter is a Maltese cross. The Maltese cross is a symbol of protection, it's a badge of honor, and its story is hundreds of years old. When a courageous band of crusaders known as the Knights of St. John fought the Muslims for possession of the Holy Land, they were faced with a new weapon not known to European fighters. It was a simple but horrible device of war, the Muslims' weapon was fire. As the crusaders advanced on the walls of the city, they were bombarded with glass bombs containing naphtha. When they were saturated with the liquid, the Muslims threw flaming torches into the crusaders, hundreds of knights were burned alive, while others risked their lives in an effort to save their kinsmen from the painful fiery deaths. Thus, these men and women became the first firemen, and first along a long line of firemen. Their heroic efforts were recognized by fellow crusaders who awarded each other with a badge of honor similar to the cross that a firefighter wears today. Since the Knights of St. John lived for close to four centuries in the island and on the island of Malta in the Mediterranean Sea, the cross became known as the Maltese cross. The Maltese cross is your symbol of protection. It means that the firefighter that wears this cross is willing to lay down his life for you, just as the crusaders sacrificed their lives for their fellow man so many years ago. The Maltese cross is a firefighter's badge of honor, signifying that they work in courage and have dedication to their fellow man. You may present the badges to the new firefighters. You can pin them or hand them, however you would like. Normally, we would pin, but we don't have duty uniforms right now.
I think it's easier to hand them, you were looking for a place to pin it.
Congratulations. Also will receive your helmet. Joe?
Thank you.
Tom?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations. I ask for a motion of adjournment.
Uh, one, one, we worked the committee for the phones, we need your official name.
No, well, we will, after tomorrow, we can, we can make it happen, but I don't know when it's gonna be, we need to get a press.
Motion to adjourn is the second. Mayor, hi? Motion to adjourn.
I ask everyone to stay for some cookies and lemonade refreshments and celebrate the new firefighter.